Good morning, everyone. I would like to go ahead and call this virtual meeting to order. If I can get roll call, please.
Vera.
Here.
Goots.
Here.
Carlson. Ding Felder. Sitcher.
I'm here.
Miranda.
There.
Meniscato.
Oh.
All right, before we begin, just a special announcement. Today is the birthday of Councilmember Orlando Goots. Councilman Goots, happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Harry Rettinball. Yeah, Rettinball. And we want to recognize you for that. I know, you know, thirty-nine years old, it's a, it's a, it's a big birthday. So we, uh, we want to wish you a good birthday.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Thank God for being here.
All right. Um, Marty, go ahead if you'd like to, um, speak.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, good morning, members of City Council. Happy birthday, Councilman Goots. Before, because of today's, um, continuing COVID-19 state of emergency, this virtual workshop meeting of the City Council is being held in accordance with the declarations and provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 20-69, as extended by EO 20-179, and by City Council Resolution Number 2020-225, and as amended. It will be conducted by remote participation or teleconferencing, which is referred to by the state of Florida statutes and rules as communications media technology. The purpose of the workshop is to receive departmental briefings from the administration that were rescheduled due to the COVID-19 state of emergency, as well as to conduct any other new business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, um, before we begin, I'd like to, um, to, uh, move by unanimous consent, um, unless there's any, um, objection, that we take public comment at the beginning of the meeting today, even though it is a technically a workshop, um, just to make it easier on the clerk and whatnot. Um, is, is there any objection from anybody here on that? That we take public comment first? All right, hearing none. Um, is there any, um, public comment at this time, clerk?
Chair, we did not receive any request for public comments nor recordings.
All right, that settles that. Then we will, um, go ahead, um, and move to begin, uh, this agenda. Whomsoever would like to kick it off? That would be Chief of Staff John Bennett.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Council, Public, and happy birthday, Councilman Goots. Um, we appreciate you taking some time this, uh, this early Monday morning uh, for our rescheduling from back in June of, uh, really three portfolios. Uh, you'll hear from two presenters today. Uh, we've budgeted two hours. I appreciate your gracious time on that. We think this has some value for, uh, the administration and council to have a, uh, a sense of clarity from our reorganization back in February, and to see all the functions and the bandwidth of, uh, of these three different portfolios. Uh, today you'll hear from, first from Administrator Osea Nguyen, uh, relevant to the Neighborhood and Community Affairs portfolio. And then when she's done, we will briefly take some questions and answers. And then I will follow up from, uh, Osea's presentation, and I will cover the mayor's, uh, direct report portfolio, as well as the Chief of Staff office. Um, just to give some context, there's a, there's about a hundred slides. So, uh, we're gonna go through these very nimbly. We know we provided the slides to you, so we're not gonna read every word. We're just gonna highlight some key facets of all the hard work of all of the, uh, department heads and managers and functional leaders that are on the call today. You'll see a theme with all of the slides. Um, it's really based on, uh, the inputs or the resources that each department or division has to work with, followed by their various outputs, next, their outcomes, and then lastly, what they're focused on, on continuous improvement. We know that council's very familiar with the departments, but sometimes when we unpack their deliverables, uh, we realize that, again, their functions and their bandwidth are stretched very big in a city of this, uh, dynamism, if you will. So with that, I will, uh, I will pause and hand the mic over to Osea Nguyen, our Administrator of Neighborhoods and Community Affairs.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and welcome to the, uh, meeting.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Chief. Good morning, council members. Um, as Chief Bennett has mentioned, I am Osea Nguyen, administrative or neighborhood of, of, administrator of Neighborhood and Community Affairs. Next slide, please. Uh, within my portfolio, there are six different areas. Uh, Arts and Cultural Affairs, uh, Neighborhood Enhancement, Community Partnerships, Equal Business Opportunity, and Neighborhood Engagement. Uh, there's one additional area that I'll speak about at the end of this presentation, and that is on the customer experience. As you can see, we have each of the, uh, managers that are represented, represented on the slides. Uh, one area that's on here, it should be, that's not on here, that should be on here, is Parks and Recreation. Um, as you all know, that recently Parks and Recreation, uh, Director Paul Dow retired. And I've been getting questions in terms of, do we have an interim? And just to put this in perspective, I'm looking at what the skill sets are, what are neat, what's needed for that position, um, before we appoint an interim or select a permanent director. If you have any questions, however, that pertains to Parks and Recreation, you can direct those directly to Lenora Robinson, and, uh, the Executive Aid for Parks and Rec. And then she will get those to me, or funnel them through the, uh, proper channels of the Chief of Staff, and then coming to me as well. And I can address or entertain any questions you may have. Next slide, please. Um, this slide gives you the overall financial overview of the FY twenty budget. And the Neighborhood and Community Affairs portfolio uh, has about sixty-six million dollars of the gross budget. In terms of the capital improvement projects, out of the a hundred and twenty-four million dollars in projects, eight-point-five million of those dollars are for our neighborhoods, and primarily in the Parks and Recreation area. Next slide, please. This gives a breakdown of, of the FTEs, uh, within our portfolio. Um, for Parks and Recreation, we have about four-hundred-and-forty-four FTEs, which makes up almost ten percent of the city's F, total, uh, ten FTEs. Um, and that equates to about fifty-three, uh, million dollars. All of the other areas have, uh, a much, a number of less FTEs. Next slide, please. Other than, uh, code enforcement or neighborhood enhancement, which has about a hundred and ten, uh, making up two-point-three percent of the, uh, general fund. Now, F, or the city's FTEs, and, uh, less than, uh, ten percent, or one percent, I'm sorry, of the city's overall budget amount in the general fund. Next slide, please. Neighborhood and Enhancement or Code Enforcement, um, they cover a number of areas. And, um, as you all know, the, this portfolio, this division is responsible for enforcing the city code. Um, we look at environmental and property maintenance. We look at the structural standards, zoning. Uh, we assist stormwater and transportation with the trees. And, uh, as you well know, also, as of last week, we had the first reading of the enforcement or allowing code enforcement the ability to write parking citations. Um, this is really important because for the areas that are not covered by the parking division, uh, since we have code officers that are out in the public and see, uh, uh, non-compliances or violations, they will have the ability to write those, uh, while they're out in the public. Uh, some of the things that the Environmental Enhancement crews do, of course, they remove the illegal dumping. Uh, we remove, uh, a lot of graffiti, in which we saw quite a bit of it during the recent protests and civil unrest. And, um, we do, uh, emergency cleanup projects as well. Next slide, please. Uh, this just gives a visual of some of the things and some of the equipment that we have. The lower left, uh, picture, as well as the topper, up top or right one, is, uh, some of the blighted areas that we will typically see and clean up in code enforcement. Next slide, please. Um, to give you some, uh, perspective in terms of the stats, and this is data that's taken from, uh, twenty nineteen. Um, we had almost forty-one thousand code inspections that were completed. We removed, um, almost thirty-two hundred tons of, uh, trash and debris. And we had almost twenty-two hundred work orders that were completed. One area that, uh, we, uh, I would say they are the unsung heroes in code enforcement, and that's our customer service team. Over the last year, um, they, uh, answered and responded to over sixty-one thousand calls. And this included, um, the twenty-eight thousand, almost twenty-nine thousand message center concerns, and the responses that were associated with them, as well as, uh, generated twenty-two hundred work orders. Next slide, please. One area that, um, we like to really tout is our operation wins, and that's working in neighborhoods. Uh, this is part of the mayor's investing in neighborhoods, where we, uh, partner with the county and use their community service workers to work on projects, um, that, that will, would typically be, uh, conducted or performed or completed by our code enforcement team. But, but because we have, or there are, uh, people are looking at for community service, we're able to offset that cost to, uh, for the taxpayers. And they focus on, on the alley cleanup, illegal dumpings, uh, abandoned property cleanup. And, um, yeah, so we really, we're really excited about this program because they do a lot of work for us. Next slide, please. The next area is, uh, Parks and Recreation. Uh, within the city of Tampa, we have almost two-hundred parks with a number of amenities, um, from the number of rec centers, uh, playgrounds, event centers, interactive water features, uh, gym and dance. Uh, our parks keep us, uh, busy, but they are, this is one of the services that the public has really come to depend on from the city, and we would like to think that we deliver in this area. Next slide, please. Uh, Chief Bennett Bennett, uh, mentioned the inputs, outputs, and outcomes. Um, this is, is provide some stats and some of the data of the accomplishments of what we experienced over the last year. Um, we offered over forty-five hundred swim lessons, and we saw, uh, ninety-seven percent increase in water safety skills. And the reason that this is important is because that decreases the drownings. Um, we're able to increase the number of water safety through the education that we have, uh, as part of the swim lessons. Same holds true for, uh, our athletics. Uh, we have thirty-four youth sports organizations, um, that are permitted. These are the legal ones that are actually, uh, working with our Parks and Recreation staff. Um, we saw forty, fifty-four hundred participants and over a thousand volunteers in the sports season. And then, um, one of the outcomes of that is that this provides a safety environment, a safer environment for our youth participants, and the mentoring and the coaching that's needed for a number of our kids in our rec centers. Um, in terms of the administration, we had almost seven-hundred-and-fifty summer participant scholarships for last year, which, um, resulted in forty-three thousand dollars in, uh, scholarship, uh, funding. Uh, since twenty thirteen, we've had, uh, three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that we've given in scholarships. Now, as of this past summer, uh, because of, uh, COVID and understanding that there are a number of, uh, parents who are underemployed or unemployed, but yet needed resources, or didn't have the needed resources to send their kids to a summer program, we made the, we offered the scholarships or the free summer program to all of the participants in our Parks and Recreation program. Next slide, please. Um, our forestry, uh, we, uh, plant the trees annually as part of the tremendous Tampa program. And we're currently now working on, how do we actually expand this program, um, to include, um, other areas of making sure it's all-inclusive of, uh, the, all the areas within the city of Tampa. Um, as you well may know, uh, one of the attractions to neighborhoods is the trees and the tree canopies. So we like to put a lot of emphasis on this, on not only planting the trees, but also in maintaining the trees as well. Um, and we've oftentimes hear that, uh, Tampa doesn't like an event that we, that we don't, well, there, it is not an event that Tampa doesn't like. And this holds true, if you look at the number of permitted events for twenty nineteen, we had, uh, three-hundred-and-thirty-two permitted, uh, events. Um, and which equates to over four-hundred-and-eighty event days. So if we had to expand the events, we had more than one event a day uh, throughout the past year. And, uh, the special events, when we start looking at our shelters, oh, we rented, four-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one rentals were processed in the last fiscal year. Next slides, please. Um, Parks and Recreation has received the Gold Medal Award finalist. This is a high honor within the parks field. Uh, this is to say that the certifications and all the criterias that the cities who, uh, participate in this award, they have met those, and this is, uh, it has met a very high standard in doing that. Next slide, please. Uh, our next area is our, the Arts and Cultural Affairs, which is led by Robin Nye. Um, the Arts and Culture Affairs area focuses on the public art, uh, public art and private development, Lights on Tampa, Arts on the Block, as well as, uh, public-private partnerships. Next slide, please. This highlights, uh, some of the areas or some of the projects that, um, the Arts Department has worked on. Uh, currently, the project is underway, uh, for, for the Channel Side Drive Tunnel. Um, the sound and installation in Ebor, um, the East Tampa Roundabouts and Paint and Crosswalks. Um, we have Art on the Block within the Rich House. And then we have a number of maintenance activity for our Arts Department. Next slide, please. Our Equal Business Opportunity. Um, you know, we often come before you, council, when we, we present our data for EBO. Um, I don't know how often we get the opportunity to provide exactly what are those specific areas that we do, those functional areas within equal business opportunities. So as you can see, we, uh, under our program metrics and analytics, we, uh, regulate the reporting. We make sure that there's, uh, visibility and availability of the programs, um, that are needed for EBO. Within this area is where we perform the actual disparity study. Uh, the Program Outreach and Certification Services. Um, this is, this is what it says. It, it's the outreach arm of EBO. We, uh, have a number of WMBE and SLBE workshops. Uh, if there are any type of, uh, conflicts, we have the resolutions, we have meetings to make sure that they are resolved. Uh, this is where we process the certification, uh, applications, as well as our extensive outreach and recruiting. The Program Compliance and Monitoring, uh, that's where we actually have, uh, we work with our, uh, purchasing department and make sure that we, uh, have a collaborative approach with looking at our sheltered markets and, uh, ensuring that our bid and RFP evaluation processes are in place. Next slide, please. Our, uh, one of the things that we've done over the last year, um, is our Bridges to Business Vendor Certification Program. And this is the actual program where we take government to the communities, and we help those vendors understand how to do business with the city of Tampa, um, what's needed to be certified, answer any questions that they may have for us. This has been very beneficial because they're able to put a face to the name as they, uh, as we work directly with them. Uh, the program has been, uh, set up, and will continue to be set up to where we reach out to each quadrant in the city, in each district, council district, to conduct one of the Bridges to Business workshops. Next slide, please. Our Neighborhood Affairs and Community Partnerships. The Neighborhood Affairs is, uh, the manager in that area is Maray Holmes, and the Community Partnership is Janelle McGregor. In the Neighborhood Affairs, uh, we have eighty-five identified neighborhood associations, and seventy-five of those are active. Um, we're currently working to target those areas, those neighborhood associations without active participation. And we will be reaching out to you, council, to see what recommendations that you have to help us identify individuals who could serve in those roles. Uh, we maintain a list of all of our participants who have participated in the mayor's Neighborhood University, and we will go through that list. But we would definitely need your help to, uh, help us select leaders. Uh, our goal is to have all of the, uh, associations active as we redefine our, uh, partnership with the community. Uh, we want to make sure that there's fair and equal representation in all of the different areas. We will work, we have worked, and we will continue to work with our Neighborhood Watch leaders, uh, again, to enhance that community engagement. Next slide, please. Uh, Neighborhood University. We will continue this twelve-week course. We're in the process now of trying to, uh, redefine what this looks like in the terms of COVID. Um, we have, uh, presented from the administration uh, what each portfolio does in MNU. But one of the benefits, and some of from the feedback that we get from the participants is going to the different areas within the city, uh, putting a visual on, whoa, I did not know this is what it would, this is where this department is, or I did not know this is the service that you provide. Um, that, we're trying to collate to see, how do we make that interactive piece possible, should we have to continue in the current state that we're in, in COVID? So we're working on redefining and addressing some of these issues. Next slide, please. I mentioned, um, as I started the presentation, on the customer experience. The customer experience is an area that, uh, the mayor has mentioned that we will focus on, um, during the next adminis, during the next year. And we actually started, um, defining what the customer experience is. Um, this is to enhance the overall public, um, customer engagement with the city. Um, our intent is to streamline the interactions between the residents and the city and part, departments. Uh, we will use this by, uh, having a customer experience, uh, director or manager, someone who will oversee not only the processes of, how do we make this happen, but the technology piece as well, um, to make sure that there's a seamless flow of information both ways from the residents into the city. Um, you may be familiar with the Message Center Complaints, uh, system that we currently have. Well, the customer experience will take that current system and expand upon it so that we can have, uh, far reaches within the departments to make sure that the information we're presenting to the public is, uh, current. We respond to customer complaints, uh, timely and accurately, and that we can meet the customer he needs. Next slide, please. That's all I have for now. What questions do you have?
Do we have any questions from any council members at this time?
This chair, this call, so I could ask a quick question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, this one, thanks, first of all, thank you so much to your department. I think your department, transportation are the two that we call on the most for constituent issues, so thank you for, uh, everyone who stepped up. Um, my big question is, I have a lot of, uh, neighborhood leaders asking about the, the Park Master Plan. Who is the point person in the interim on that? Who should we be coordinating with, uh, to, uh, direct neighborhood associates to speak with?
Okay, so if the neighborhood associations would speak through, um, all of the, the contact from the main neighborhood association should be directed through Maray Holmes. And then Maray will contact our internal point of contact, and that's Brad Suter in the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, we would like to have that one funnel of information through our neighborhoods, um, councilmen, because if, if there's, if we find that there are questions that are common, um, then we can have, put out communication to make sure that, um, everyone hears the same thing from one voice. So direct them through Maray Holmes, but internally, to answer your question, Brad Suter is that point of contact.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from any other council members?
I'm, I'm calling Miranda.
Go ahead.
Let me say this, although I understand, I think, what, uh, what's written in today's August tenth, twenty-twenty presentation to the City Council. I, I think, and I don't wanna be a pessimist, I've already been accused of being one, which is fine with me, because I, pessimist to me is a realist. So I, I'm, I'm looking at a ten-year program that I used to live by. Now, because of my age, I only look at a daily program. But what I'm looking at is not about twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, but in, I'm into twenty-twenty-two. And when you make all these plans, what happens if Plan A or Plan B or Plan C or Plan D does not meet that plateau? And what's gonna happen in twenty-twenty-two? What I say about this is that, experiencing from the first, uh, decline in revenues to the city back in two thousand and eight all through, uh, when you notice and understand that, uh, when the property assessor does his PRA, uh, ra, rating on what the taxes should be according to the value, we've certainly seen an increase in the last two or three years that was very good for the citizen and for the city of Tampa as far as goods and services were received from this great city. However, when you look at twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one is gonna base on the taxes that the property appraiser does when he sends out the trim notices. But when you look at twenty-twenty-two, the downfall is not gonna be next year. It's gonna be toward the end of next year. So when he sends- So when he sends those taxes out, and I hope I'm wrong, what's going to happen when you have an additional twenty or thirty or forty, fifty million dollar decrease in the values of the properties? Are we going to be able to hold everything that we're writing about in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three? Those are the things that I look at, not only in a business, but in my own life. Like I said earlier, I never planned for tomorrow. I always planned for ten years from now, but because of my age, I only plan for tomorrow now. If you can answer that, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. So as we go in with everything within this portfolio, and I would feel comfortable in staying within the city, we look at our current projections as well as based our program and programming and, and projects on our future projections as well, based on the trends and what we're, that's happening. So everything that has been presented has been presented in the most efficient way with no fluff, just again, doing the bare bones, but yet delivering quality services to the public. So yes, we are in fact looking at that. And we're not increasing programming or increasing positions or services based on what we think is going to happen in the future. We're, or we're presenting on what we know we have now. And then we have posited ourselves or positioned ourselves in such a way within our portfolios to adjust accordingly.
Well, thank you, Ms. Nguyen. That sounds great. But somebody in twenty twenty-two, I don't know who, where, how, if my projections are right, is going to be bye-bye. And that's what I want to make sure that these individuals coming on, that you somehow explain what's happening and what, because of the virus and other things that are going on in the country. There are over forty million homes, as I understand it, that may be in the auction block in the next year and a half. That's not my standard. Those are what I've seen on television, what I've read in local newspapers. So based on that alone, I'm very hesitant to go past twenty twenty because whatever happens in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one may not meet the standard of the lifestyle that we're used to in the prior years. However, let me say another thing. When we, and I think Councilman Carlson asked, asked a question about who do we go to? When I was growing up, it was a little different. There was a streetcar. Now there's no streetcar to speak of, other than the one that we put in for limited access. So what I'm saying is that every park had a city employee male and a city employee park. And all the neighborhood knew exactly where to go to that person that worked in the park, both male and female, and what their needs and they thought should be assessed. That was all vanished by Little League. Little League came on and took over the system of that park within their neighborhood. However, Little League does not have the right to answer for the city. So now you have to go centralize into the park system to find out what's going on. I'm not saying you should change, but realistically, this would not happen if you had individuals that worked in the park that were city employees. I'm not advocating for that now, but what I'm saying is, growing up in that system, we knew exactly who to go. Everybody did that. That doesn't mean now you have Little League presidents and this, that, and the other. And, and I'm just looking at the system and everybody is thinking, well, why do we have travel ball? You have travel ball because every parent think that their sons and daughters are going to be professional at whatever sport they play. And you know what? That's not a bad thing at all. It's a good thing. However, when you look at travel ball compared to what's happening now, if you go back and do an analytical study on what we've been through the last fifteen or twenty years, you see an enormous decline, and I don't know that to be a fact, in participation in sports in the park and most of the sports. Why is that? Well, times have changed. We didn't have no TV. Certainly didn't have a cellphone. Certainly you didn't have a computer. All we had was a park. So all the kids would go where? To the park. And we learned how to socialize with people we didn't know, some we knew. And that's what made you a person. We also had porches. And having the porch, you saw communication with people walking up the street. If you put a porch in a house now, you're spending your money for nothing. You don't even know who your neighbor is. Because we also didn't have air conditioning. So I'm trying to open the eyes. Maybe I don't need to open the eyes. Maybe all of us understand that of what could happen if we have a downfall in the economy. And the projections that I've seen, and these are not mine really, are something that doesn't seem like we're going to get out of this hole right away. And all they're not, my projection in my own little one-cell mind, I'm calculating what's going to happen. Are you going to have the things to do certain things with? Travel balls were keeping the parks now going, in a way. Because if travel ball leaves, all they're going to do is find somewhere else, whether it's at night or whether when the league ain't playing or whatever, to make the things happen for the kids, for the boys and girls. Now you have, you have so many more competitions than when you and I had. Now you, Ms. Nguyen, you're much younger than me. I'm talking about anybody else had when they were growing up. It's amazing. They teach you everything now, which is great for the kid. But how do you sustain that when you have a drop in revenue in twenty twenty-two and on, if I'm correct? That's all I'm saying. Thank you very much, Ms. Nguyen.
Yes, sir. Look at that.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Doos.
Yeah, well, I would say of, of one point in Mr. Miranda's comment is that he's right as it relates to youth athletics. You know, once upon a time, when you had city employees working with the youth programs, you had less problems in the city, the staff, and kind of controlled the kids more. And they understood mom and dad and everyone. And for a person who's coached youth athletes for a long time, you know, youth athletics has changed. It's become a money-making business now. And that's just my personal opinion from what I've seen over the years. Everyone's making money off kids. And it's, it's kind of changed the direction of youth athletics. So, and I've always said that, you know, we should be a part, since it's our parks, we should be a part of the process for our young people. So, you know, it goes back to community policing. You know, once upon a time, police officers on duty, get off, coaching kids. They understood who the kids were, the parents. You had a better system in place, and we got, kind of got away from that. Powell was in every park at that time. What's all your youth programs? We've gotten away from that. And again, I just think if you bring in a better mentorship, you get more quality coaches, you know. You know, you look at who's coaching the kids. And that's just the way I see youth athletics right now. It's kind of turned into a money market scheme. And I just wish somehow we could kind of work to get that back, especially to youth football. Travel ball is a big one, too, but youth football is becoming that as well. And I'm glad Mr. Miranda can point that out a little bit. Thank you. Your back to chair.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other questions or comments from council members? Any other questions or comments from council members? Hearing none, I would just like to state that we have a memo from Councilman Dingfelder, who will not be able to participate this morning due to a conflict, but he will be following along with the recap and, and watch everything or listen to everything from the memo. All right. Speaker, please. Next speaker. Our next speaker.
Thank you, Chairman John Bennett, Chief of Staff. You can bring up the, the mayor's office's presentation, please. Thank you for that. And, and counsel, before I get started, I just, I kind of wanted to augment some of the responses from Ms. Nguyen as it related to just about everything that council gave feedback on, but specifically on two things. One, and of course, in the Q and A period, I do have Mr. Raharo close by for any specifics. However, what I wanted to focus on real quick is that when, when the mayor unveiled her strategic plan going into this fiscal year budget recommendation, the foundation of that budget or the centerpiece, if you will, is financial opportunity and responsibilities. And this is where some of that resiliency, if you will, shows itself. And I'll give two quick examples. One was when Revenue and Finance, under the CFO's leadership, brought you the refinancing of those bonds that allowed us to, to change our finance structure and adapt to the current problems. And then another thing, too, just so you know, that every time a position or equity alignment or something is brought to the attention of the city, it goes through a three, a three and a five-year forecast analysis before it gets to my desk. And part of that is, is to make sure that every personnel hire shows that we at least can forecast that out beyond the current, you know, date and time. And also to make sure that we are resilient to the economy and we find the right bandwidth of resources. So we are looking at that through both that financial opportunity and responsibility foundation, and then through our sustainability and resilience program, which is kind of wrap around all that we do in this city with your guidance and leadership as well as the public support. So with that, I will kick off the officer, the offices of the mayor. Next slide, please. All right. So first you see a cross-section here. And again, I'm going to go very fast because we have about eighty percent of the slides left in these two big portfolios. And I'm just going to hit the highlights. Again, you have these at your fingertips and we're always available for follow-up questions. But as you look down the far-left column, you could see the portfolios and offices that report directly to the mayor. And you can see down on the bottom right, that represents about thirteen and a half percent of the city's resources from a funding perspective. Next slide, please. All right. So first, I would like to start out with Ms. Grimes' office as city attorney. You noticed that she has two deputy city attorneys, Andreas Elman and Morris Massey. And they're also supported by two chief assistant city attorneys, Kate Wells and Ursula Richardson. And you could see as that unpacks itself, there's a land use and real estate practice group, a governmental affairs and infrastructure practice group, a litigation practice group, and a public safety practice group. And you could see the respective support attorneys under each one of those divisions. I can tell you from working closely with Ms. Grimes, looking at the workload and the, the resources and the case management, as well as the efficiencies and supporting technology, it's going through a great state of revamping. And she's also available for questions. Next slide, please. All right. So you can see, you know, from an output perspective, beyond the resources, which is largely personnel, highlighted by the different divisions, if you will, the litigation practice group and the land use and real estate practice group. That second macro bullet, if you will, if you add it all, add it up, that shows to be about seven hundred and ten cases. And the footnote below, most everything is twenty nineteen totals unless there is an asterisk. Next slide, please. You can see the next two divisions unpack themselves. Again, five hundred and sixty-one cases under governmental affairs and infrastructure practice group. And then literally, if you added up everything down below, it's, it's well over forty-six hundred. And if you added them all up, I came up to over six thousand cases divided by twenty people, which is a little over three hundred per person if everybody had an equal load. And this doesn't count the admin support and the city council and the CRA business as well that is offered as in-kind in that relationship. Next slide, please. So this is at least from the side chair. This has been exciting to watch under Ms. Grimes' office, but highlighting in the first bullet, reducing staff by eighteen percent, reclassifying employees, again, organization. Next bullet talks about automation. The third one, diversity in hiring and promotions. Fourth bullet, claims settlement committee. I, I'm really excited about that because what that does, it also teaches our department heads how to look at risk management and what can we do in a training and an educational way internally to reduce claims and settlements. The fifth bullet, again, we're going into measuring criteria. We've talked about our enterprise performance management program. Everybody will be feeding into that, both in an internal customer sense as well as a sense of community outward facing. Training programs for code enforcement officers. Assignment tracker, created city council CRA motion tracker to make sure that we keep up with the motions in a timely manner to support city council and the public. An extern process for law students and a goal to overhaul outside council hiring process and implement RFQ process with that. Next slide, please. Now pivoting to the CFO's office and Revenue and Finance under Mr. Raharo. You can see by the org chart that his direct reports are Mr. Huffstettler and Mr. Perry. And they are, the support team below of Mr. Huffstettler and Mr. Perry are shown as well. And this has been a great team to work with, especially through the, the budget and the relief programs that the city has offered lately. Next fact, next slide. All right. As you can see, there's some administration fast facts that the team has put together. I'll let you peruse that again. You may have seen it already. But quickly, looking at the bold investing, fiscal analysis, budgeting, debt and asset management, accounting and payroll functions, fiscal policies, practices and procedures, and the Revenue and Finance, of course, financial structure based on a public sector, on those best practices. Next slide, please. All right. As you see this data, collaborate with city agencies and external partners. You know, when you go back to that underlying strategic foundation I talked about a little bit ago, that's one of the value points is when we do partner, we can look at broader opportunities to adjust what we have. Example, there was a comprehensive grant slide in the budget presentation last week that shows how the administration is seeking grants to offset some of our other revenue challenges or funding challenges. And then below that, you see leveraging technology, which is going to be a theme through this administration that we will look to use solid supporting technology and, and also give a public-facing self-service way through our Open Gov platform soon to come so the public can look at things and unpack them without contacting necessarily city staff. Next slide, please. As far as the outputs, you know recently, based on the presentation, one point three billion dollar in a capital improvement program of approximately five hundred million. You can see that fifty-eight thousand payments to vendors and contractors totaling over four hundred million. Payroll of over three hundred million. Grants, again, what's coming here is soon to be eighty million, but currently twenty million over twenty programs. Looking and managing and balancing over a hundred and twenty funds. And then, of course, process over approximately thirteen million dollars in FEMA and other emergency grant management recoveries, if you will. Next slide. All right. So I, I think this is a, a slide of pride, if you will, for the, for the department. In the twenty nineteen Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That's a testimony I'm sure that Mr. Raharo and team would like to share with the public to make sure that they're very accountable for the government's financial assets, if you will. You can see this continues. Distinguished Budget Presentation in twenty nineteen, timely pay for over forty-four hundred employees. Of course, our retirees, the chair's group that has served the city for so many years are well-protected through this office. And you can see that as you go down the list, oversight of the outstanding debt, the cash and investments, and of course, you've heard very well about the high credit ratings in the last budget presentation last week. Next slide, please. And again, a reminder that the slides were put together ahead of the budget presentation back in, in June, but it's always worth resharing, if you will, these great outcomes of the bond ratings that gives the administration and city council for the bond ratings that gives the administration and City Council for the benefit of the public the power to use these ratings to serve the city. Next slide, please. All right, again, one of the slides near and dear to my heart is the continuous improvement that we're all looking for. You can see down towards the bottom, a new pension and budget system, enhanced the grants scheme and grant-seeking efforts, you know, to try and draw more of those grant-funding opportunities toward the city, and increase our professional certifications to make sure that we have good sustainment within our personnel resources. Next slide, please. As we pivot to the City Clerk Department of Leadership, you can see it's led by Shirley Fox Knowles, and she is supported by Sandy Marshall, Sue Lee Lucas, and Jennifer Diaz. Next slide, please. And as Ms. Shirley Fox Knowles' organizational chart unfolds, you can see the various divisions where they have City Council divisions, Code Enforcement Division, Administrative Division, and digitization, as well as the Clerk Support Technician, as well as the Inventory Technician Spaces and Supporting Staff. Next slide. What stuck out to me in preparation for this presentation was the third bullet, over a million documents and historical photos annually, you know, roughly 250 workdays, that's about 4,000 touchpoints a day. So you can see the voluminous amount of work that goes into the outputs of Archives and Records. Next slide, please. And here's just a graphical representation, if you will, in the before and after to show the pride in the division's efforts in keeping our records in good state of repository. Next slide, please. Again, additional examples here, exhibits at the Robert W. Saunders Library and the Henry B. Plant Museum. This gives, again, one of the visions of the city is always to try and bring some of our services and our efforts out to the public space without coming into the main office building or Old City Hall. Next slide, please. All right, so in Archives and Records, again, some of the continuous improvement efforts, you can see technology showing up in the first bullet, online records management's training course, reduce our scanning backlog, complete the book repair of at least 40 historical books, our internship programs, dispose of at least 2,000 boxes that are at retention levels, and add additional photos to the digital collection site. Next slide. And unfortunately, this event has come and gone since we were supposed to present in the middle to late June, but obviously, the city supports the Archives Awareness Week, and it went virtual this year due to COVID. Next slide. I think the quick highlight here is the second bullet, 60 agendas, 60 action summaries, handling minutes for the year for City Council. You can see the other boards and committees related to that. The fourth bullet, you know, talks about the average number of requests as it relates to public records. It's at least one per workday, and of course, some of those are very voluminous. There's been, you can see well over 1,500 multi-departmental public records requests. The fifth bullet, obviously, special magistrates efforts, and you can see the total amount collected and applied over the last year at the bottom. Next slide. And of course, like Osea mentioned earlier, one of our goals is obviously to make our customer experience through service at a higher standard than, and of course, reach the community in a very agile way through technology and different points of service, but yet getting a standardized response, and this accentuates that in the City Clerk's office. Next slide. And again, if you scan through the bullets, things that stuck out for us, especially as it relates to the strategic plan, having more efficient, smarter ways of completing the agenda in minutes and timely manner, more efficient way of public records, again, with supporting technology, a smarter, not harder approach, working with land development for ways of taking in affidavits, streamlining the Code Enforcement Division agenda, working on e-signatures through our Technology and Innovation Office, continue to work on some of the qualitative aspects of oral histories, council members, and other significant folks that have served the city, and continue to work to preserve the city's history. Next slide, please. As we move into the Internal Audit Department, again, reporting directly to the mayor, you can see that the director, Ms. Christine Glover, and I work closely with her office on daily operations, if you will, and she is supported by five auditors, and we had added an auditor last year to help with our data reliability and holding the departments more accountable as it comes to performance measurement. And just as a highlight, Ms. Glover is also one of the executive sponsors of the Five Dimensions of our Enterprise Performance Management, overseeing data reliability for the city. Next slide. And as you look at this table, going back to FY13, you can see that the workload has increased kind of organically over the period in those different rows, audits completed, post-audit reviews, non-audit services, audits in progress, and hotline cases. And so her office obviously stays busy. Next slide, please. And of course, this follows up with direct-to-available time as it relates to audits, direct-to-total time percentages, and again, this expands since FY13 all the way through FY19. And again, it's indicative of the data performance that we're looking for as it relates to internal customer service and quality control, as you see down at the bottom. Next slide, please. When I first met with Christine, obviously, I was very enamored in the way that she runs her shop with her support staff, and a lot of this centers around compliance. Her and I have a, through Ms. Rotolo's seat in my office, process the audits in a timely manner and make sure that as we look at the projections for risk-based analysis going forward, that it's in line with the department's strategic vision to serve the community. And you could see as this unpacks, a lot of it is about quantitative project management, if you will. Next slide. And now we will jump into Ms. Ashley Baumann's area, Marketing Communications. You can see her lead support, Tom Date, and Jeremy Rex on the organizational aspect, and they're supported by the folks below each of those managers. And you recall recently, in a staff report, we had just gone through some of the service-level agreements out of Ms. Baumann's office. Next slide. And as we all know, telling Tampa's story is important, and having access to every department in the city, you can see what Ms. Baumann is highlighting as part of her outputs, is earned media, press releases, social media graphic design, and video production in that space. Next slide. And again, these outcomes unpack continually, especially using COVID-19 as an example, and you can read some of the value-driven metrics as it relates to that type of communication. And I'm sure this transposes to every category, no matter what function we're trying to talk to the public about. Next slide, please. One of the themes that Ms. Baumann and I have talked to with the department directors and administrators is it's hard for us to share what we don't know, and one of the things when you have, you know, over, well over two dozen departments out there operating for serving the citizens, is trying to get that information up and into Marketing Communications so it can be shared either proactively or reactively with the public, and so creating those better lines of communications. And just like Ms. Baumann has given City Council service-level agreement, she is also reciprocated with that internally, and we're looking forward to building those strong lines of communication to make sure that we are doing as much as possible to get information into the front lines of the citizens. Next slide, please. All right, as we moved into Ms. Marley Wilk's area, Strategic Initiatives and Government Affairs and Leadership and Organization, you can see that Marley does a lot with a small bandwidth, if you will, of support. It's her and Ian Whitney, and together, they work under the federal representation of those contractors, the state representation, and of course, the local representation. And I know City Council's had a lot of engagement with both Marley and Ian over the year, and actually, longer than the year, and they continue to support the administration, of course, and council as needed. Next slide. It was Marley's office that kind of led the helm on redrafting, I shouldn't say redraft, but actually compile our strategic plan into a more actionable and aligned process to go with the budget and our enterprise performance management. So you can see that first bullet kind of aligns with that effort. As far as helping the advisory teams kick off, and now we are launching the Sustainability and Resilience, and of course, I know she has worked closely with Ms. Carol Post on the economic advisory portion of the next plan that's coming out and in serving council support, as well as Ms. Post's area. You see the third bullet, the One Tampa Relief Fund, about raising funding for support in the community, legislative agenda and strategy, and you can see the monitoring of the legislation over 3,583 bills in addition, and hundreds of amendments throughout the legislative session. Next slide, please. And again, as you can read the various data points, funding for seven projects totaling one and a half million, facilitated 22 1-on-1 meetings as it relates to the elected officials in Tallahassee and DC on behalf of the city, monitoring and implementing the board appointments. You can see those unpacked on the third bullet, 41 internal, external board and committees of appointing that, again, a lot of credit to Ian Whitney for supporting that. And then the last bullet is policy research and recommendations to the city staff. Next slide, please. And you can see this just further unpacks that data, so I'll let you peruse that as you see fit, but this supports the previous slide. Next slide. Very similar on the federal legislative outcomes, you can see the support, and of course, the last bullet, a lot of us are still obviously focused on the cares aspect, and that hasn't gone away since the presentation was built back before June. Next slide. In the strategic initiatives, again, four released reports on the key advisory team recommendations. We're looking forward to the kickoff of our Resilient Cities Catalyst, and I know Marley had a lot to do with that before Whit Raymer had arrived, so we're looking forward to launching that. We talked about the raising of the One Tampa Funds and the strategic support to the various departments. Next slide. And again, supporting the city on the cares distribution efforts, you know, just about a report every morning at 8:00 on the EOC call comes from Mr. Raharo, and obviously, Marley is, and Ian or Mar are tuned that closely and provide relevant feedback for decision support, as you see the rest of the bullets. One of my favorites is the public-private partnerships. There's a saying, with partners, we can do more, and obviously, they're key in supporting our partners in the region. And you can see that the additional bullets, fighting preemption and increase the local appropriations in state and federal budgets. All right, next slide. If you can bring up the next presentation. Chairman, I'll go through both of these, and then we can do questions if that's the pleasure of the
Yes, sir. That's fine.
All right, next slide, please. The person worth highlighting here is Senior Executive Aide Debbie Rotolo. I don't know what we would do without Debbie. I can tell you between the agendas, just about everything you've seen in the, in both the mayor's office area, as well as what you're going to see under the Chief of Staff's office, comes through Debbie's desk, and she was responsible for putting a lot of this presentation in the order that you see and collecting the content. So we're very thankful that Debbie is on our team, and I'm sure council and their legislative aides feel the same. Next slide, please. So, you know, the largest thing, again, this was presented back or built back in June, but basically, what you're seeing on this slide has culminated in that strategic plan rollout with the budget. Again, you probably saw two-thirds of it. We are still finessing how those first two-thirds unpack, the macro and kind of the middle, and then the micro. And a lot of the things that you've seen with the advisory, especially as it relates to workforce, housing, mobility, infrastructure, and then, of course, we talked about the financial opportunities and responsibility, and the customer-centric or citizen and community-centric services will all wrap around and come together, and that's been a key focus on my office, if you will, in line with developing the budget and rolling out the performance measurement to make sure that we're doing as we say we do. Next slide, please. And very similar to how I kicked off the last presentation, on the far-left column, you could see the departments and divisions that report directly to the Chief of Staff's office, and they represent slightly under 10% of the city's funds, and you can see those in the center of the funding source. Next slide, please. All right, one of our biggest departments under the Chief of Staff is our Human Resources Department, led by Ms. Kelly Austin as the director, and then you can see the six respective managers, Kimberly Sullivan, Mike Swain, Dave Blazewitz, Valerie Horton-Riggs, Kay Hunter, and Frida Gardner, as it relates to supporting Kelly and her office, and the over, what will soon to be 4,600 employees, which includes full-time, part-time, seasonal, and contract support in city positions, temporary positions. Next slide, please. If you look at this list and take a deep breath, you can realize how much effort and weight is put on the Human Resources Department. You know, all benefits programs, I know council ran parallel with us under the negotiations of the three bargaining agreements, specifically the Healthcare Trust, and, you know, every new employee comes through this level of orientation, training for the entire city, we talked a little bit about that, but it's everything that can touch one of our employees as it relates to not only them, but also their benefits and their dependents as well. Next slide. I'll let you scan these outcomes, but if you look at the FMLA cases, parental leave cases, grievances, civil service cases cases, grievances, civil service cases, arbitrations, EEO cases, public records requests, applications, medical benefits and reimbursements, you can see there's a plethora of things that are dynamically going on in human resources as it relates to outcomes. Next slide, please. One of the goals that Kelly and I had worked on when I first arrived, as well as with Mr. O'Hara's shop and Mike Perry's shop, was trying to standardize our vacancy rates. You know, council approves a budget to deliver services, and we want to recruit the most diverse, the best and brightest capable workforce possible, and it's our obligation to try and keep that at a 5% attrition rate. Not an easy thing to do, but every department is working on that in their respective space. I know Ms. Austin's team is working on the Personnel Manual, and of course, we're constantly updating our, our training specifically focused on ethics and diversity. You can see a myriad of links as it relates to the agreements, Personnel Manual, the Ethics Code, Lobbyist and Visitor Log, et cetera. So again, another opportunity to see all the touchpoints in human resources. Next slide, please. As we move into our Purchasing Department led by Mr. Gregory Spearmun, tremendous amount of experience, supported by Mr. Kevin Frye and Deanna Marshall, as well as Michael Ashby between the management and the supervisory realm of that department. Next slide, please. And you can see Mr. Spearmun's org chart unfold, supported by Executive Aide Michelle Blizzard, and of course, you can see the various positions that support the Purchasing Department. Next slide, please. Under purchasing, I joke with Mr. Spearmun, you see the word routine, I don't know that anything is routine in government purchasing and procurement, but you can see all the different touchpoints as it relates to the bid process, resolution preparation, contract development, supporting our equal business opportunity that Ms. Nguyen talked about earlier, supporting emergency procurement. You think about the COVID supplies, now we're moving into the dynamic part of our hurricane season, everything from sandbags and that kind of procurement has to happen to support the departments and the citizens. Other miscellaneous reports, and you can see inventory management, Oracle access requests, there's just a lot going on in Mr. Spearmun's space. Some of the terms I tend to use, and I appreciate Mr. Spearmun putting his bullets under each one, the complicated issues, the complex issues, and then the more challenging issues as government tries to continue to improve the purchasing process, if you will. Next slide, please. In a quantitative realm, those numbers that you see on the, on the right columns are in the millions, and you can see that as the far-left column unpacks itself from the total dollars purchased, and if you look at the projected for FY '20, you can see how, how many things and products and supplies, et cetera, and as it relates to equal business opportunity percentages and efforts. Next slide, please. So in the bids and quotes area, again, another quantitative view of some of the efforts that come out of Mr. Spearmun's office for your review. Again, in the outcome space, you can see that just using what we call P-card or purchasing card transactions and trying to increase the annual rebates, it's been an effort that we've been discussing. There are opportunities in this area, and Mr. Spearmun has been innovative in looking at that. This slide particularly, I know we just had a big diesel fuel item on the agenda last week that led to a staff report, and I picked up on Mr. Miranda's comments talking about, hopefully our fuel will go down, both in diesel and regular, as we start to move to more hybrid and electric vehicles. You know, I know personally driving a hybrid, it's doubled my, my gas mileage, if you will, or, you know, fueling up once every two weeks. We have electric vehicles coming onboard through our Fleet Division, and we are looking forward to sharing those deliveries with council, with the, from the administration. As part of accountability, if you will, our inventory statistics are shown there. Again, I won't walk through everything, but you could see that, you know, whatever we purchase and procure needs to be inventoried and asset managed, and that's part of the city's responsibility as good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. Next slide. You can see as you walk through the initiatives, there's been a lot of efforts to support equal business opportunity through job order contracting, shelter marketing, and other small local business and minority business options to increase those percentages based on our strategic goals, and again, sharing those numbers transparently with council and the public. And you can see additional bullets follow through there. I will say that towards the middle of the page, following Mr. Spearmun and Ms. Duncan's office, watching the McKay Bay Waste Energy Plant Transition Support, and the number of contracts going from private management to public management was daunting, and I know they worked extremely hard, not only just in the transition, but under the conditions of COVID and information gathering to make that transfer happen. So just a call out for them on that. Again, you see a thread of technological support in these bullets, a lot of it relates to barcode scanning, if you will, online meetings, electronic solicitations. There's been a lot of improvements just in the year that I have been here in this area of supporting technology, so we appreciate that department doing that, and we will go to the next slide, please. We're moving now into Technology and Innovation, the leadership team under Mr. Harper. So we have a, obviously, a business application portfolio, and that unpacks underneath, you have our change management team led by Diane Jemai, Infrastructure Services with Eric Hayden. Eric was largely responsible for the workload as it relates to the virtual city council meetings, so a quick shout-out to him. Martin Zanash worked with very closely over the years in our enterprise security. Martin does an amazing job keeping, if you think about all the data points that are at risk in the city, and there's a lot of pressure on Martin, who handles it very well, in my professional opinion. Rick Metz on the web services, and Ms. Carrie Wright as it relates to GIS, and I can tell you that we've been doing a lot, a lot with GIS to try and make sure the public has visual information as it relates to customer service and projects in the field so they can have a quick understanding, and Carrie's been very adaptive to supporting that effort. Next slide, please. Again, my quick math, unpacking the fast facts that Russell's team has put together. If you look at it, there's about 171 service requests per day, leading to over 43,000 or approximately 43,000 per year, managing the data centers and the cloud infrastructure, the network facilities, the business applications. You can see the open projects that are well-managed to support all the departments. Of course, we have field radios, you know, fire, police, code enforcement, and you can see the hardware that has to be managed as it relates to our mobile technology. Next slide. Of course, one of the big terms in this space is uptime, and it takes a lot of effort to make sure that we're solid uptime. You know, as these slides unfold, I just would like council and the public to think about all of the virtual technology that had to be implemented to keep the city going during the COVID crisis and the shelter, or the Safe at Home process to keep our employees safe, but yet keep, keep services moving at their full value. And you can see all the efficiencies and effectiveness in this slide. Next slide, please. I can tell from firsthand experience, since I had been back to the city, again, you can see that third bullet transitioning 1,500 employees to telework, putting up a remote call center during the initial onset of COVID to make sure that our staff could answer the phones remotely to serve the citizens. You can see the number of virtual meetings supported, you know, all of these things require tremendous bandwidth and adaptability within that department. Next slide, please. One of our crown jewels in the city is the Mayor's Youth Organization. Molly Bebel works directly for our office and the Chief of Staff, and she supports really two divisions, the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council and the Mayor's Youth Corps. And I can tell you from working with Molly, this is an amazing effort that touches our young people as they progress from high school into a lot of their secondary and post-secondary activities. You can see Molly's efforts, leadership workshops, educational events, works closely with Florida League of Cities and National League of Cities, you know, to get that policy effort going with the students, obviously, working on Capitol Hill, has a mobile journalism team, community service activities. I can tell you that Molly's team was engaging with a lot of the COVID relief efforts, open forums with the mayor, city council, as you've been aware of, discussions with law enforcement, and, and I'm grateful that our office gets to do a block related to city government seminar. Next slide, please. Obviously, the, the key outcomes are to gain those life skills, engage in community events, make connections not only locally but beyond in the US and maybe even beyond that, meet with elected officials, produce video segments, get back to the community, provide input for change from our, our young leaders and young future leaders, be participants in the democratic process, and understand the roles of local government entities. Next slide, please. I can tell you Ms. Bebel's passion of giving back to the community through her leadership extends into these students, I've seen it, and it's, it's an amazing effort to allow these young participants to become leaders in the public and hopefully stay right here in the city as they journey through their, their next chapters, possibly inspire an opportunity for a career in public service, understand how to navigate the complexities and limitations. Some of the things that Councilman Goode, Councilman Miranda, and Councilman Carlson mentioned earlier in the comments are those things that Molly points to, to make sure that we do have a sustaining generation behind us to try and bring those quality of life services into the community, expand racial and socioeconomic diversity of the program that Molly runs, and offer additional opportunities for students to become involved in local government. Next slide will give you some photographic highlights of what Molly's area does. You could see a, a good cross-functional mix of efforts with her teams. Next slide, please. Most of you know Raquel Poncho as our ADA coordinator. You could see that, again, through the photographic energy here, that she works, you know, not only with the Mayor's Alliance and the Hillsborough County Alliance with persons with disabilities, but she also supports the Autism Friendly Camp. Next slide, please. Her specific outputs, networking with citizens with disabilities, addressing accommodation requests, collaborate with city colleagues to ensure ADA and 504 compliance, conduct ADA training sessions, and serve on advisory boards to support those with disabilities. Next slide, please. You can see some of the deliverables, the caption videos, make sure that transportation and stormwater, supporting, you know, at least the level ground areas of the community. I've known that she's gone through our parks plans with Ms. Nguyen, and when Mr. Dial was here and we had meetings about making our parks accessible, and you can see some of that in the future projects, but a lot of the efforts that she picks up on proactively as its department's agenda moves along are coming through her office. Next slide, please. So again, another descriptive slide relating to Ms. Poncho's work, continue to network and support the outreach of community members with disabilities, collaborate with the colleagues even more as we move forward, and research the best practices. And I can tell you specifically, I have met with Raquel and talked about working on some aging friendly programs. They're very beneficial to our seniors, and they're a multi-pronged approach to give a high quality of life to our senior community. Next slide, please. And as we start to wrap up, I know you've all met Whit Raymer, we've had one-on-one calls with council, as you see the new Office of Sustainability and Resilience move along, there'll be, you know, two major projects, there's a line item in the budget for Climate Action Plan, as well as the, the Resilient Cities Catalyst. You can see that program will be coming together under the advisory group that, again, working out of, or with Marley's office, but most importantly, as Whit has gone through all of the departments with a survey and either situational or progressive and proactive meetings, and I know that various council members have had conversations with Whit in some of the respective areas of, of progress in sustainability and resilience from their lens and their districts. So we're looking forward to that. Next slide, please. And again, being a key component of the strategic plan of the mayor, you can see some of the things that Whit has already delved into and will be delving into as it relates to renewable energy, community-wide municipal operations, and we already talked about Climate Action and Equity Plan, environmental and social justice, protecting our natural resources and water conservation, green infrastructure, and, you know, as it relates to our community, making sure they work, we work with our all-hazard partners, both locally and regionally. And with that, I believe that was our last slide, so we are happy to open up with questions, and as mentioned, we should have most, if not all, department heads and administrators on these two portfolios available for questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any questions from any members of council? Any questions at this time?
It's Carlson, Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Chief Bennett, I just want to say thank you. Having you in place helps me sleep better at night, and, you know, we've heard a lot of complaints from constituents about the city, but when I talk to people, most of the bad experiences they had were before you took over, and, and the ones that we still have, some of them are the departments that you've done a bit of change. So I just want to thank you for bringing higher-level professionalism and accountability and measurement to the city, and also raising all of our expectations of where we should go. And one, one suggestion is that I think the, the communication or perspective of the customer service level has not caught up with the reality, and I know you're humble about it, and you may not want to raise expectations right now, but I think the, the people that are experiencing the customer service level now are, for the most part, very happy, and so for the people who try to pass, it would be good maybe for them to know the higher quality that it is now. So anyway, thank you all for your help.
Thank you very much. Are there any other council members?
Vera, if I may?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Thank you to the administration and Chief Bennett and everybody for your presentations. Very much so appreciated, goes without saying. I, I wanted to additionally, I know everybody was given deference, but to say what a pleasure it's always been to work with Raquel and with the Office of Disabilities. Raquel has taken such a lead in the Autism Sensory Friendly Program that was started before by the prior administration. And, and I'm, and I'm especially glad to see the, the improvement that we've seen in the scope of it. It's funny, I, I had misspoke, and then I thought I misspoke, in the last Tampa City Council meeting on the prospective East Tampa Park that's going to be going up. And it appears that there is going to be actually proposed, at least, disability accessible and friendly equipment and, and a playground there for children. So, you know, what I see, thanks to the leadership of the mayor, Chief Bennett, and, and the vision also of Raquel and her hard work day-to-day is, is that we're building on an original vision that, that starts off with children with disabilities, and this sort of connects to parks and rec that we were talking about before, that it, it, it starts off with children with autism. But, you know, being in the, in that, in that community, a lot, a lot of people ask me, which is normal, hey, I have a, a child who's intellectually disabled, or somebody who has Down Syndrome, or cerebral palsy, or whatever it may be. And, and people wanted to see that very moral vision expanded. And I'm glad to see with the autism park, a commitment to building on that idea and making all of our city parks having playground equipment that is accessible to children with disabilities and special needs. And then that additional commitment in East Tampa, I again, just wanted to commend this administration for building on that record and that, and that legacy, but especially for Raquel, who I just think does such a great job. I've had the pleasure of working with her at many different functions, and she's, she's always there in the community at so many different disability-related events, whether it's Best Buddies, Sensory Friendly Santa Events, whatever it may be, representing the city of Tampa, to let those parents raising children with special needs know that, that we may have limited resources in the city, that we've got their back, and that certainly their plight is always first on our mind. And so I, Chief Bennett, I just wanted to thank you for that, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other members of council who wish to speak?
Mr. Chair, again, thanks for the leadership this morning. You know, sometimes you have to look at people in position, and I want to commend the mayor for bringing John Bennett on as the Chief of Staff. We've seen a dramatic change of the Chief of Staff and the administration actually working with council. I wasn't a part of the last administration, but I heard some of the stories. And I just want to say that whenever you can make compromise, or whenever you can work together with people, it makes it better for the city, makes it better for the employees and all around. So I just want to commend John Bennett for what he's doing. I know this guy's working hard all the time, trying to get things moving, and I'm just grateful that some of the projects, some of the things I've asked him to do, that he hasn't said no. Let's work and see how we can make it happen. And I'm just glad we're working together. Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other council members wish to speak at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Miranda. I just want to say thank you for, to the chief for a straightforward presentation on all the factual matters of the city. Going forward, I know one thing, when I come to work early, that white car is still there before I get here. When I leave, the car is still here. So I don't know where he sleeps at, but I can tell you, he doesn't sleep much because he's always doing something for the city. I appreciate all the hard work that Mr. Bennett has done in the past and continues to do today, and will also continue to do that in the future. Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Topson, sit through.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Hey, chief, you've been working hard for this administration, and I know that you've helped me out quite a bit, and I do thank you very, very much with our department heads throughout the city. It's a pleasure to work with them. And whenever I have asked for small, for the most small things, they have always come through for me. So I'm glad to be a part of the family that the city of Tampa has, and it's, it's always been a pleasure to work with you and, and everybody in the city. I must also send kudos to Ms. Molly. She was in DC when I was there at the National League of Cities with Tampa Youth Corps, and she is a great representative for our city. Again, chief, thank you very much. I'm looking, always looking forward to working with you. Nothing more, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from any of the council members? Hearing none. Mr. Bennett, I think it's, it's been said already by other council members, but you're, you're wonderful, you're extremely hardworking, and as Councilman Miranda said, you know, when you get there in the morning, the white car is there, and when we leave at night, the white car is there. So when you sleep, if you sleep, and where you sleep, we don't know because you're always on the go. But we appreciate everything that you do, everything that your staff does, everybody, everybody that takes part in, and especially going virtual in this time, which is, you know, we're in uncharted territory, but we're making the best of it and trying to move the city forward, and we appreciate everybody's hard work. And I know that you, you really are a leader, and you show that. Councilman Citro said, has, you know, just mentioned it, you know, no matter how small, you know, you're, you're always there, you're always responsive, you're always on top of things, and we sincerely appreciate you. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. In response globally to everybody's comment, first, I just want to thank all the department heads and managers that are on, because without them, this presentation wouldn't have come together as it is. You know, using Mr. Miranda's comments about straightforward, they are straightforward. The mayor builds, and she has built consistently, strong teams that have been well-networked and work in a collaborative and collegial manner with not only a local lens, but a regional and, and global lens. So we're looking forward, as Councilman Citro said, as growing the family and building these relationships as we go forward. But I couldn't be more honored to be back at the city, working with such an amazing team of professionals and elected officials. And we look forward to finalizing next year's plan and working with you through the budget hearings and the adoption. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Anything else, sir? Anything that anybody else wishes to say at this point? So Mr. Chief of Staff, does this complete or conclude all the presentations this morning?
Yes, sir, it does. And of course, our, through our office, we are always available to respond to something after the fact and work, again, through your respective offices to get things done. Thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody's ability to reschedule this today.
Thank you very much. Again, you know, thank you everyone for taking part in this, for everybody's hard work, all the departments, all the speakers. We appreciate you. Saying that this concludes the agenda, we will then now go to any new business for many council members. I'll start with Councilmember Vera. Do you have anything at this time, sir?
No, Mr. Chair. Good meeting. Thank you very much, but nothing at all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilman Goode, the, the birthday man of the hour.
Nothing to say, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelder, of course, did send a memo that he will not, was not able to be a part this morning, but of course, he's going to watch everything, watch the recap. Councilman Carlson, do you have anything, sir?
No, thanks, so, I thanks again to all the staff who put the, the hard work together, put this together. And just for any of the public watching, this is part of the transparency that the administration and the mayor and the city council want to put forward so that the public can understand more the detail, what goes on behind the budget and how the city operates. So thanks again to everybody for the detail and also helping to bring the public along and make sure the public understands what we're spending money on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to say happy birthday to my fraternal brother, Councilman Goode. Hope your, your birthday is going to be very good for you. Again, Chief Bennett, thank you very much. Thank you to all the city staff for getting this present, this presentation for us. I'm looking forward to moving forward into this year. Nothing more, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Miranda.
No, I appreciate everything. I, I know it seems like a three brochures, a different factor together, and it takes an enormous amount of time and energy to put it together. And I'm just going to leave you with something I just wrote to myself. Tomorrow is tomorrow with yesterday's results. So make sure you do it right today. You don't have to change tomorrow. Thank you very much, all of you.
Very good. Thank you very much. And one final thing that I wanted to bring up, unless there is any objection, and I would like unanimous consent, unless there's any discussion, all morning meetings are non-quasi-judicial. I'd like them to go to audio only, and I'll tell you why. Last Thursday was a test, going video with the mayor's presentation, and every, everybody connecting and whatnot. And it did go well, but it's an enormous strain on a lot of the staff, a lot of the technical folks behind the scenes that, that make these meetings possible. So unless there's any discussion or any objection, I would like that the morning meetings be audio only. Does anybody have any comments or objection on that? Councilman Vera.
This is Vera, and, and do you need a motion for that, sir? Or?
Unless there's any, and if there's any objection on it, Mr. Shelby, do we, will we need an official motion?
I would.
If you want to do it by, if you want, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council. If you want to do it by unanimous consent without objection, you certainly can. That'll be sufficient direction to the administration and the staff to prepare that way. If you want to make it more formal in the form of a motion and a second and a vote, that'll definitely put it to bed. So it's your, it's your pleasure, City Council.
And that would be, yeah, and, and thank you, and I think that's a wise choice, Mr. Chair. The, the, the extra additional work that goes into having video conference and meetings are done for a very narrowly tailored purpose generally, and that generally is quasi-judicial. I, I, otherwise, I really don't see the necessity for that, to be honest. I mean, given, it is beneficial, but just given the extra time, I, I don't think it's worth the benefit, all things considered. So I'd agree with that. So I'll move if, 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 if a motion is necessary.
Well, is there any other discussion or any objection to, to this? Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Topson.
No, Jason, from me, I'm looking for CRA to do the same thing, go audio as well, sir.
Okay. And we can always, you know, you're chairing that on Thursday, so that's, you know, per your direction too, and, okay? Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shelby.
Yes, thank you. If the clerk then could notate that that is the direction of council by unanimous consent of those present at today's meeting.
All right. If we can go ahead and do that, the clerk can note that. And so this is by unanimous consent that morning meetings, which are non-quasi-judicial, be audio only. All right. Another thing is.
This is Carlson. I agree strongly with that, too. There's no reason that that's wrong.
Thank you very much. Another thing is, because it is audio, because we are virtual, if any council member is leaving the meeting, you know, just using the restroom, putting their phone on mute, whatever it is, please acknowledge that so we know in case there's any discussion or whatnot, just for the record. So should anybody not be taking part in, in the meeting for whatever portion to, to step back, whatever, just let us know ahead of time, not by text message, not by email, just announce it, you know, here over audio, so it's on the record and we know, and it's, you know, publicly noted.
Mr. Chairman, may I follow up with that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Shelby.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because this is a virtual meeting, and because we need to be sure that people who leave the meeting, council members who leave the meeting for the remainder of the meeting, please announce to the chair and to the clerk and to the public so that that is on the record, number one. And, and number two is that it will be clear that you are not present because of technical issues that have yet to be resolved. So if you could do that and get into that habit, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
And Mr. Shelby, do we need a motion to receive and file all documents, saying that there was a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, you do, sir. But before you do that, I just want to make a final reminder. You do have the CRA meeting this week, this Thursday morning, and that is, as the Chair of the CRA, Councilman Goode, stated, that is audio only. Your next council meeting, City Council, will be, and please make a note, it is next Monday night, next Monday night, August 17th, beginning at 5:01 PM, 5:01 PM. And that is for issues related to comprehensive plan amendments, land use matters, and it is quasi-judicial. So that will be video. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Receiving files in order.
Chairman, move to receiving file, Miranda.
All right. We have a question from Councilmember Miranda, taking from Councilmember Goode, if we can get a roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yeah.
Dingfelder.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Meniscus.
Yes.
Motion care with Councilmember Dingfelder being absent.
All right. Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Thank you.